This is the November 12th meeting of the Plankwood Subcommittee working on Stormwater Ordinance for the town of Acton. Just pull through this real quickly if you could. There's a cover letter entitled Brenda Shallow, then there's a memo, a two-page memo from KCP, and then Chapter 2, Stormwater Hydrology. Where's this one? This is from BMPs to... Have you ever seen this? I don't recognize that title. Anybody else?
What?
I'm looking out to see if I can plug it in somehow.
Down at the bottom it says, "Volume 3 BMPs Technical Design Manual."
Yes, so it was nice to have it printed for us.
What's that?
It was nice to have it printed for us so we don't have to go looking for it. And then she has a whole copy of that.
And then after that there's Paul's draft of all of it.
It's from Volume 3. It's the Main Stormwater Best Management, Best Practices Guide. It's the document number 3 that we've been looking through. It's Volume 3, Chapter 2 is Stormwater Hydrology, so that must be where it comes from.
What's your title again?
The Main Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. It's the main DEP. What I've been referring to as is Document Number 3, DEP Document Number 3.
I thought you too.
I don't think the rest of us don't have any of that.
Well, that's one of the documents that the original...
Those are chapters 1 and 2.
The original one from this past spring. One of the ones I was referring to, so I dug it up and put in some key elements, but anyway.
Can you read that down for us?
Really, on Volume 2.
Main Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. And Volume 3 is entitled BMP Technical Design Manual. And within Volume 3, Chapter 2 is Stormwater Hydrology. So I assume, yeah, Volume 3 BMPs Technical Design Manual, so yes, it does come from there. So there we have our citation.
Do you want to dig into Jen's work at our next meeting when we have a chance to digest it? I have not.
Well, let me just see what her... So did she come up with an alternate, an alternate one, or is she just justifying where that came from?
Well, just do it.
We have to read it to find it.
Okay, so we've got the whole management ordinance right after it. Okay, so it looks like this is the doc... Yeah, this is the document that I sent you guys the other day. That was a fairly quick turnaround. I sent it on Sunday and it is now Tuesday. But did that section change is the question. All right, so... So 3123 Alpha. 312... 3Alpha. All right, so I guess it's... It looks a little different. B... Oh! Aha! Oh no, that's just my change. So was there anything... Was there anything changed? Is she just... I'm not quite clear on...
I think the meat and potatoes of it is at the bottom of 1 and 2. I would suggest we table this until the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm not entirely thrilled with what I'm seeing here at the moment because it's not really clear on... I think she's just trying to explain what it's doing and that's not necessarily anything that's gonna help me here, but... All right, shall we go through the, from Sunday's work and see if this makes more sense in retrospect?
Okay, so we're gonna table Jen's correspondence.
Could we get a chance to read it?
Perhaps for a moment, just to see what the upshot is, because it seems like she's just trying to just, you know, explain what it does as opposed to changing anything.
Which isn't bad, but we gotta get our minds around it.
Okay. You wanna begin at the beginning and walk through the changes? Just anything that's underlined or crossed out, just to see if we're on agreement before we move on?
Let me just get up to speed here on what's said.
When I was reading it, I found change. Other changes I'd like to make later at another time. Somebody wants to start?
No. Sometimes I'm still... So we're still bouncing from your new draft of 111213, is that correct? Draft V3, is that correct?
Yeah, version 3. And this is essentially integrating what we discussed last time around that I think we, in the late breaking hours, got a certain amount of consensus and I kinda ran with that, so this is what this is.
Can you wait one second? I just wanna find Jess's... Where the... You gave us a high copy of that, Jess, didn't you?
Yeah.
A one, a one-page?
Well, it doesn't really matter all that much.
This is what she had, I'm gonna look at it. I just want to back it up. I don't think I'll make it for tonight.
Okay, where do you want to start?
Well, I propose we begin at the beginning and walk through it.
Starting with applicability.
Well, actually, on page 1 I've got definitions. I added one word before I had added the following definition shall apply interpretation enforcement of this ordinance. And I just added the word "stormwater," just so it's clear that this part of the bigger ordinance, the stormwater ordinance, that this is a part of. The next one, we have the definition of disconnected impervious cover. I tossed out both the original and my proposed definition and I substituted the one that Jess came up with last time around. So it's, unless I fat-fingered something, that is exactly what you came up with.
Yeah, I didn't compare the two. Just... It makes mostly sense, it just doesn't seem to start right. I guess it is right because it's disconnected impervious, so it is impervious.
Yeah, I mean it's...
I read through it a few times today, unless I'm wrong. I wish there was a smoother way of saying it. I don't have a problem with what it says.
Jess, was that on this draft you gave us last week?
Oh no, it was another week. It was another piece of paper I gave you at some point.
Let's see.
But I mean, that's good enough for me. I mean, I read it three times, so I...
I'm pretty sure, actually, I was reading it when I was typing this thing and at the moment I can't put my fingers on it, but...
Oh, okay.
The upshot is that, you know, I think both of the definitions that we discussed last time around put the pieces together and make fairly clear why it's called disconnected impervious. Yeah, so what, you wanna read that and then we'll just make sure that this in fact says what that says and... What I have here for the definition on this draft is impervious cover that does not contribute directly to stormwater runoff from a site, comma, but direct stormwater runoff to on-site impervious cover to infiltrate into the soil or be filtered by overland flow so that the net rate and volume of stormwater runoff from the disconnected impervious cover is not greater than the rate and volume from undisturbed cover of equal area.
I don't know what else.
I know obvious flaws in it.
Well, it's just, it's a tough sentence. I'll tell you that.
May I just ask one question? Is that, is the sense of... So that the net rate of volume is, is not greater than the rate of volume from undisturbed, is that getting at the crux of the original undisturbed state? The existing and proposed thing that we've kicked around before?
Well, I mean, it is talking about undisturbed cover of equal area. What's sort of interesting is, I mean, one could pick apart the whole undisturbed cover of equal area as opposed to this piece of land when it was undisturbed. Yeah, but I think where even, even I would say that that is a little too piggy. But, I mean, I think it basically explains why the word disconnected... You know, what the relevance of the word disconnected is. Basically, the original definition as we had it doesn't say anything about disconnecting anything. Okay, so it was, it actually read, "The sum of the proposed areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff..." Oh, actually, so proposed areas, and the proposed word was a little strange. "...of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff and by means of implementing BMPs and LID strategies is designed to capture and filtrate the precipitation from a 1-inch 24-hour rain event." So we've tossed the citation of a, of a specific amount of rain and we've, I think, gone a long way to explaining what the disconnected element is all about.
Okay. It reads fine to me. The only thing I would suggest is Jen does, in scanning her verbiage there that we just got tonight, she does touch on this.
So does she have a definition? I don't know, unless I...
How about if we just took out "does not contribute directly to stormwater runoff from a site" and says, and says something like "impervious cover that drains..." "That drains stormwater runoff to on-site impervious cover to infiltrate."
Okay, so allow me, if I may, to...
It just, it's kind of a bulky, I don't get, you know, there's no problem with the meaning of it, it's just kind of bulky when you start a sentence. It's an impervious cover that does not contribute directly to stormwater runoff from a site. Direct water, oh, it just doesn't sound...
What's wrong with the original definition?
Nothing wrong with it. Well, it's just that it's an awkward sentence. I don't wanna change the meaning of it.
May I regale you?
Well, I'll change it much.
May I regale with the alternate definition from October 15th? The alternate definition reads as follows. "The sum of the areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff and by means of implementing BMPs and LID strategies is designed to capture and filtrate precipitation with the result of effectively disconnecting that impervious cover from the stormwater drainage network." So that's another option.
That's better because it's showing the togetherness. The only thing that's awkward about this way is that it's not, when you say runoff from a site, it's not really emphasizing that you're just keeping the water on the site.
Right.
The one thing you just said actually sounds good too. And this is okay, it's just not great. It's not super.
For simplicity's sake, I would, I would go with Jen's original 2212 definition. It's, it's not...
"The sum of the proposed areas of impervious cover and pavement that receive runoff and..."
Which definition are you referring to? Jess, FB's original?
Well, I think we're going with the 1-inch 24-hour event.
Yeah.
And about the 24... Well, I'm not so much quibbling about the 1-inch 24-hour event, but the issue that I, that I thought it was really, wasn't quite adequate is that it doesn't really explain what the word disconnected is supposed to mean. What's the relevance of the word disconnected? So I ended up taking a phrase from later in the document and combining it with parts of the original definition which gave the alternate I had come up with. I mean, do you wanna just take this and shoot, give it another shot next time around?
No, I just wanna get my arms around it. I mean, I'm kinda happy enough with it, I just...
It may, it may take the, running it through the latest suggestions from Jessmerson, I think, maybe to clarify that one.
No, I don't, unless, unless she's actually got a definition, I don't necessarily think that it's gonna do anything.
I prefer that we...
We can just kinda touch on this one and kinda do it three different ways.
Yeah, I mean, it's really close.
Ah, so we do have suggested rewording on this thing when we get there. Cool. All right. I'm, I'm comfortable, I would say, with either of the two definitions that were suggested last time. This is one of the two that were suggested last time. I'm comfortable with either one, whatever you guys wanna do that, that kinda gets the main points across that we're trying to convey.
I'm comfortable with this one.
May we, may we move to the next item and review what Jen's correspondence might contribute to this? And then we'll revisit this on the 26th. Is that okay?
Okay. 26.
So, I'm sorry, I don't know when that...
So that Thanksgiving? Start closing Thanksgiving.
It's in two weeks anyway, so it would be, gee, what's the, it would be the 24th, wouldn't it?
Okay, so we're jumping to this section?
No, it would be 26, when you have it.
The Tuesday of 4th Thanksgiving?
I think so, yeah.
I'm not sure, I'll be...
Okay, excuse me, Paul. What's next?
Okay, yeah, interesting. Well, I mean, do you wanna just keep on moving forward here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still sort of flailing a little bit on that definition apparently.
There's more, more input, that's all.
So going down to the high-quality water definition that is totally stricken at this time, thought being that the, the board will not be... Oh, excuse me, no, high, high-quality water was stricken, I think, because of that other, that other clause that was eliminated, so this has to do with...
Yeah, it's not using the term anywhere in the document anymore.
Right, and I did search for it. So if we jump momentarily ahead to the bottom of page 9, top of page 10, that section is no longer there, which is why the high-quality water definition is not there anymore.
On, do you want draft two with...
I'm still on the latest draft.
Okay, page 9?
Bottom of 9, top of 10. This really just says, "Under certain circumstances, the Plankwood may require additional stuff." And the thought was at the time that they would be doing that, so that was stricken. And because that was stricken, it was the only reference to high-quality waters. We are tentatively striking the high-quality water definition.
Yeah, because it's a New Hampshire derivative, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I, I actually had a little learning that we have to look into at some point regarding permit of notification, just as we're moving down through the definitions. I've only seen it in use in New Hampshire documents, I haven't seen it used in Maine. In fact, Maine uses permit by rule. So we gotta find out what permit of notification means in Maine, because I couldn't find a single reference to it.
Permit by notification. My, my understanding is that the, the non- incidental, the incidental disturbance is permit by notification.
Yeah, but we might have to change that because we don't know what a permit of notification means in Maine, so we...
Why would it mean something different than what is the founder here?
Well, because if you read permit by notification and you read permit by rule, you're reading two of the same things.
Where were you finding that term, Jen?
In the definitions of the... Anyway, it's not a big thing, it was just a note I made for future when we go back and do the whole...
I agree that the definitions are, have a certain amount of overlap, that we could clarify those.
Well, I just, again, I don't know. I mean, even later in the doc, I know it's in the document, it's listed that you have to get a permit of notification. I don't think we've ever asked Ken specifically if a permit of notification is something that he can issue. That's all. Because I don't know if we use that terminology in Maine. That's, that's all I'm, I'm just bringing it up as a technical...
Run it by Ken.
And while you're, yeah, while you're on that point, is there an intent, any time to do a full run-through with Ken?
Yes.
At some point, yeah, will we have enough?
I mean, I certainly would recommend that.
Yep, we'll give him, we'll give him a couple of weeks to read it before we, give him something to read first.
So, that probably could be done simultaneously.
Yeah, so if you look at...
Maybe.
If you look at the middle page 5, it talks about number 2, about two-thirds of the way down the page, it's number 2. "An application for a permit by notification and an LID plan shall be submitted." Basically, the idea is...
Right, I just got here, it may not be the term that Ken uses, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. If he doesn't get back to you, you're good, you know, basically, is what it comes down to, as opposed to the other option, which is permit by rule, which means they have to specifically respond and tell you that you're good. That's really the two different, the two things that I, that I understand for these things.
All right, well, yep. Fine.
But I'm saying...
I just find it interesting though, I couldn't find it under a Maine definition.
But the definitions are, you know, they're not, in a word, the definitions aren't definitive for these two things. They, you could just as easily take the definite, you know, the definition one or the other and reverse them, they pretty much...
That's what I noticed.
Would the same...
So, for future...
Unless it's the case that the permit by rule is, is referring to, as we usually use that term, the state, you know...
Well, for the soil and sedimentation, yeah.
Yeah, and permit by notification is maybe something that just would be a CEO device.
Well, the DEP isn't necessarily involved in the, in the non- incidental disturbance, are they?
No, no, it's just over 20,000 square.
But that's what, that's what we require for the non- incidental, is the permit by, permit by rule.
Yeah, well, that's because that, that, that comes into place with the sediment erosion plan that you have to come up with. Permit by rule, if you, you can expedite, permit by rule allows you to expedite an excavation site plan if you're qualified, you know, and you show that you've got a good plan, so it's people who are trained specifically to do low impact. And because the definition I, I don't wanna spend too much time on this, the definition I found for permit by notification in another book was 211... It was, this is why I thought they were so similar. It's "allowed for a simple permitting process with rapid turnaround time for certain projects which will not adversely impact public waters provided they are completed in accordance with standard conditions." And that's where you refer back to the manual, but...
Yeah, but it doesn't say, neither of these definitions say anything about, you know, needing to get a response or not needing to get a response, but that's the upshot of both of those. I mean, obviously, that, you know, they're explaining when you would do it, but it doesn't explain what it is.
I don't see the potential at all about the timing of it and what the permit is.
Well, the notification is, is really just saying, you know, it makes, from my perspective, it's not necessarily gonna be saying anything about when you would do it, but a permit by notification is essentially, "I'm gonna do this, here's my plan, and you have so much time to get back to me, and if you don't, I'm automatically permitted." Whereas permit by rule...
Right, that's not how it's defined.
I know it isn't, but that's, that's how it's...
So that's not the meaning of it.
But that's how it's explained in, in...
No, that's two separate, I see, I see that as separate. I see that as a self-imposed deadline, period. It has nothing to do with the nature of what a permit of notification is.
Okay.
That's all, you know, I don't know, that's just how I see it. Permit of notification is a certain kind of permit.
Okay, moving on.
It's an expediting permit.
Okay, well, I would say that clarification on that would be helpful for us, but let's have it the next time around.
Yep.
It gets to a lovely applicability. You'll note here that even though I thought there was some merit in what we discussed last week about moving some of these other clauses up, I acknowledge your uncomfortability with doing that and left it there. It wasn't legally or... Not that big a deal, so it's been left the way it was in terms of order. So I did one additional thing here. So Jess, you had talked about "Stormwater ordinance shall apply for the zones, you know, development within the following zones." So I, I moved another clause, which is the main DEP stormwater ordinance.
I don't know where to put that clause. I know why you did it and I get it. And it, it makes sense in a way to put it there, but it's also a distraction.
Well, the point, the reason I did it is the same reason that you moved all the other stuff up there. It should apply to all of this. It should apply to the 1 and the 2.
Why don't we put it in the exclusions? And put the exclusions before the, put the exclusions right after the zones. And/or, I also just did a rewrite to make this sound better. "This stormwater ordinance shall apply to all the development with the following, within the following zones that are not already..." Zones, whoops, it doesn't even make sense already. "That are not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit." I just sticking it in the middle of the sentence there doesn't, doesn't help anyone. Suddenly they're asking a question, why's that?
It makes sense, it makes sense to take the main DEP stormwater permit as an exclusion, you know. Following activities and projects are excluded from this ordinance if it already calls for, you know, a main DEP stormwater permit.
I would do that. That was one of, that's something I came up with in my review. I, I wrote it and I actually put it in there as...
I think that makes sense.
Well, but Ken still loves it, those sites and everything. He still reviews them and goes over sites that the DEP is, and he still brings a best possible occasion.
But that's not the point, you still need to go through your incidental run-off then.
I don't know if it would be an exclusion, I don't know if it's necessarily an exclusion.
It is an exclusion.
Well, it is, it is absolutely an exclusion based on, based on how it was raised.
If you go, if you're already going through the DEP stormwater permitting process, you're not duplicating it through, through incidental and non- incidental. Because it's already bigger.
The intent of the course to be in the town.
It's already bigger than a... It's already bigger than a non-incidental.
When we get down to the enforcement part and everything, it's like, how do we want to obey to the town, we want to obey to the tier of the town.
It's separate from the ordinance. Because it's separate from the ordinance, it's, I mean, the only way we write it anywhere is to say that it doesn't, if you're not already working with the DEP, then our ordinance applies.
Yeah, no, I see that there, I don't...
The way it was originally written, it absolutely mentioned that for item one, but it wasn't mentioned in item two. So one couldn't argue, you know, when do I do two, you know, then you could get into this big, you know, discussion about, when do I do two? This makes it very clear that when you do is to...
When you do new development.
When do you do, when do you...
When you do new development, you do one, when you not do one, then you do two.
And you get that when you have an impervious area that's like over 20,000 square feet or something, or it's, you know, it gets bigger than the non-incidental.
Right, but the intent here, though, is, and I agree with you, I agree with what I think you're saying, is that, yes, indeed, we do in fact want to, you know, if it's got a main DEP stormwater permit, it's bigger than this, we do not want to do any of this.
We don't need to, because it's already done.
And therefore, it would be perfectly reasonable to add it to the exclusions.
That was what I was thinking.
And then it would simplify, it wouldn't be quite so cumbersome a sentence.
Yeah, it's a phrase that we keep throwing around to find a spot for.
I think that's odd, I wouldn't vote for that.
Why not?
Because I just think it's an odd way to structure it.
Why?
Because it's not really an exclusion, it is just something, well, if they're not excluded, they're already participating through this other program.
It's talking about this stormwater ordinance, so we're eliminating discussion of this stormwater ordinance.
I just think structure, structure in that, I mean, it's not like a huge issue.
If you're doing it, it doesn't apply.
I wouldn't necessarily vote for that, I'm sorry, you know, I wouldn't.
Well, but if you're, if you're already doing a main DEP stormwater permit, then...
No, I understand what you're saying, I just think structuring it into the, if you read the other exclusions, it doesn't really seem to fit with them, reseeding and repair of existing lawn, septic system, subsurface explorations, utility project, I mean, it's not, it's just, I don't...
Okay, so you're thinking, you're thinking that happens in the...
You're right, it is bigger than those little, little things.
Well, it's just different than what an exclusion is, it's kind of, it is of its own caliber, obviously, but I, I just wouldn't...
Okay, so you're not talking about the meaning of it, just the people.
No, no, I wouldn't put it in the exclusion section personally, but...
Tom, you have a lovely opportunity to cast weight in either direction here.
I, again, I would defer to Jen Jesperson, I think.
I don't think she was commenting on any of what we're talking about.
I, well, in a roundabout way, she handled that by fitting it in as a, in the last clause of the last sentence, where she says, "and is not already subject to a main DEP."
Yeah, we could just put it back where it was, it really wasn't doing any harm there.
Stick it at the end for example.
Because right now, it doesn't belong in the middle of the sentence, because it totally distracts you from getting to the point.
Well, where it was, was only applying to one and not two.
Two is never going to apply to two.
Do we want them, do we want them to do two?
It's never going to apply to one.
They'd have to have a hell of a pattern.
It doesn't even apply to one.
Yeah.
But it's true that it's not a menial, I mean, the nature of the other exclusions are different than the nature of this one as an exclusion.
It would seem out of place there, huh?
Well, how else do you want to, you know, where else would you like to put this, even if it's in a separate sentence, if you want?
Yeah, I think it's in the separate sentence.
That where it applies to both one and two, because I have a problem when you start, when you say it only is applying to one and two.
Okay, this is what it applies to, "The Stormwater Management Law, blah, 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 requires a full permit to be obtained from the DEP prior to construction of a project consisting of 20,000 square feet or more of impervious area." Okay, that's half an acre of impervious, that is way bigger than any project that we are going to have in these zones, it's just, it's not going to happen. It's half an acre of impervious alone, okay? And that's, it's even more strict if it's around, you know, impaired streams and stuff. But that is what the law says, and that's what it's referring to, and so...
Right, but those projects could have decks, or patios, or retaining walls, or accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, could they not?
It is an impervious surface, it's an impervious surface of 20,000 square feet.
Okay, okay, so then, could to apply if you don't specifically preclude it from applying by sticking it somewhere near the top?
Yeah.
If it applies, it applies.
Well, the thing is, we want to clearly say that one and two are, you know, included in this thing or not, that's, now, you know, if we move it from the top, or however we do it, or either exclusions or from the top...
They just make it its own sentence, because we're just...
I'm good with that.
From the end, where it...
I just want, don't want to go, you know, making the intent vague again.
Well, we have it up, proposed, Paul, you have it proposed, this storm, at the very first line under applicability, "This stormwater ordinance shall apply for projects not already subject to DEP stormwater permit."
Right.
You have it right there as the heading for the whole section.
Understood, but it has been stated, perhaps with validity, that it makes the sentence too cumbersome, so how do you want to do it?
Oh, in that first sentence?
Yeah.
Oh, really? I didn't find it too cumbersome.
Well, I mean, it's something that I got dwelling on, and maybe didn't need to dwell on it, but I found it, when you interrupt a sentence to change the subject and then go back to the subject, it's not a good sentence.
Well, we could just put it at the end, "this stormwater ordinance shall apply to new development for the following zones."
Within the following zones, provided, or...
And then comma for projects not already subject to...
Not already subject, yeah, except as long as...
Put it at, as far as qualified.
As long as it doesn't read like the zones are not already subject, because that's what I ended up writing it, I ended up writing a sentence that makes it sound like it's referring to the zone.
Well, I mean, clearly it's talking about projects not already subject, but if you want to move that subordinate clause to the end, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's not going to change any of the stuff that I'm having a problem with.
Right, it just goes a little better that way, yeah.
Yep.
It's just making the sentence...
So we're making it less, I mean, more cumbersome to less cumbersome, I'm good with that.
"This ordinance shall apply to all new development within the following zones..."
And I added that later clause there, and as further qualified in one and two below, to make very clear that one or two has to apply in order for any of this to apply.
"This stormwater ordinance shall apply to all new development." Okay, oh, I don't know what I wrote, I wrote, "that are not already, that is not already subject to a main DEP stormwater permit." Just hold me.
Okay, so, we have three zones, and the inventing here is more my ongoing battle with Microsoft Word than any intention.
I know, I need a spell check, I was coming up with all these words as I was trying to type.
So, number one now, and one and two now are subject to what it says above, okay, and one and two are just clarifications. One now says, "all new development, including development of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure," and then I added in this the clause from two, "or new or expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces if it meets the threshold level of disturbance as delineated in, you know, in the lower section here." So, where this is important to me, at least, the talk about decks, patios, retaining walls, is that may be part of the larger project.
Right.
Making clear that, you know, we don't necessarily drop down to two just because number one doesn't talk about decks.
Yeah, and I kind of, I had to retype it for myself, so, again, I tried to smooth it out, not to change it, not to change it, but, "all new development, including construction of a new structure," or, I said, okay, I changed it to, "all new development, including construction of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, including new or expanded decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces that meet the threshold level of disturbance as delineated." So I just smoothed it out.
I like that, I like that, the use of including better than the word or.
Right.
Because or is a repetition of too much of the sensibility of two, which I think is trying to delineate.
Okay, so do you want to go over that one more time? There's definitely a few words here and there.
Yeah, well, I throw in the word construction just to say, how a new word, instead of...
Of course.
Well, just instead of saying development, 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 we also have some visuals to it, what we are is constructing something, just, you know.
Yeah, okay, so instead of development, we have construction, that's cool.
"All new development, including construction of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, including new or expanded decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces that meet the threshold level of disturbance," has delineated in section five, et cetera.
Okay, so when you say including, oh, okay.
Including...
All right, and I'm just thinking it's...
Instead of or, new or expansion.
Okay, so, but we're not talking about absolutely including, it's possibly including, potentially including, but I'll give you that including doesn't necessarily mean it absolutely has to have all that stuff.
Right.
So including newer expansion of decks...
These are all defined, it's defining what all new development is.
Patios, retaining walls, okay, is any words after the word including different?
No.
Okay, I did have in a comma after new structure, so, "including construction of a new structure..."
Yeah, comma.
Comma, or expansion. Then you have to kind of take what that says...
Wait a second, oh, yeah, but you don't need a comma there. You don't need the first comma.
Okay.
It just doesn't, I thought that was a typo.
Nope.
"All new development, including construction of a new structure or expansion of an existing structure, comma."
Okay, so one and two need to sort of dovetail, okay, and also the paragraph down in, where it has the decks and stuff, page 13, that paragraph needs to dovetail as well. So however exactly we construct one and two, we want to make 13 as exactly similar as we can, so it's very clear that we're meaning the same kind of thing.
Well, I didn't suggest any changes for two, except for maybe bringing back that line, not part of development, I don't think you need it.
"Newer expansion of decks," okay, including, including, "newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces," no comma, no comma there, so I think we're good with compatibility with one still, we don't have to change anything there. And then looking at page 13, "newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, blah, blah, blah." Okay, yes, so that dovetails with two.
Okay, I'm 14, 18. 13, yeah, I'm not sure what page you're talking about.
I was talking about 13, the top third or about a third way down to 13, that clause that we ended up striking some things.
Right, somehow I want to do it, I printed my own thing, I made my heart...
Do you indeed really want to strike the line through revige there, starting with not part of the development tool?
I would say yes, because otherwise, one could say that if they are part of an existing primary structure within zones, whatever, then you don't have to do this. And that's fine, if in fact it's being done elsewhere.
Let's not go there again, but anyway, whatever.
Oh, I see what you're, yeah, all right.
I mean, I sort of, too, I sort of like saying not part of development, just because it feels like something's missing, but I agree that if you add it, it's just, it is just extra words.
Fine.
So if it's missing from both, both two there and...
And keeping in mind that what's in this section, starting on page 13, is not anything that requires paperwork, it's just guidelines.
Right.
And guidelines, you know, it's a good thing to have guidelines.
Well, they're standards, yes.
Now, we may find later, hopefully not, when we look in at citations, that it's going to conflict with what the heck this says, and then I would revisit that question, but...
May we put a tentative stamp of approval then on this as it stands, as we've discussed the revisions.
And have we talked about two?
I'm just saying, two, one, three, no.
Yeah, seems good.
Oh, actually, I think I inadvertently crossed off the number two there, that's not supposed to be crossed off.
Right, I caught that.
Okay, so, two now says, "newer expansion of decks, patios, retaining walls, accessory structures, or impervious surfaces, whether it meets the threshold disturbance or not, shall meet requirements in section," whatever, so basically you're saying, whatever we do with one, if you have one of those things, you want to look at those guidelines, that's all we're saying.
Yep.
Okay? And presumably, the exclusions exclude from one and/or two, because we had, that's all part of applicability, and the exclusions would exclude from any or all.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Moving on, one more item, okay, today?
I think we have an OMG moment here.
I'm ready to say, we've done it, let's go.
No kidding, okay, so, top of five, we have Tom's redefinition of disturbance, so, "the disturbance of layman is the exposure of soil, sand, gravel, or rocks by human activities such as clearing of trees or vegetation, grading, blasting, or excavation. This includes buildings, driveways, walkways, lawn areas, construction access, and grading." So instead of is the exposure of, and are exposed, it has kind of rephrased it a little bit, but I think I'm good either way, but...
I'm good with it.
That also means I'm good with this one.
Good, okay. Do we, we have three minutes to do one more.
So, so we're leaving that, oh, never mind, we're moving that to the end of that sentence, okay.
Can I ask a quick question? At a later date, are we going to consider rearranging parts and pieces of the applicability? We have it as written now, we agree with it, but are we going to, well, it's just that the exclusions logically might come earlier, if they came earlier, then we'd get, our definitions are, anyway, to me, it's probably six of one, half a dozen, I guess.
I have no argument about that, but you can fight that battle, well, I'll jump in if it looks like it's coming.
To me, it's just a logical progression of things, but it's not like a super huge deal, it's not...
I would suggest, as a, an example of why and how that wording is normal, planning revige, you would find in our gravel, what am I trying to say, the gravel pit ordinance thing, it states conditions of applicability, and then it's a normal procedure for delineating, you know, in the order of things, you delineate what is applicable under this regulation, and then you say what is not applicable.
So you're saying elsewhere in our larger ordinance, we don't want to conflict with the...
In this particular case, we're jumping around, we're trying to get them to get, know this concept right up front, yeah, it doesn't, to me, it's not that big a deal, it really isn't.
I would just vote that it's in the logical order of thought.
Yeah, but exclusions would, you know, I would...
Well, I guess the, what the logical order of thought would be varies depending on the person.
Yeah, I think so, too, because it is logical the way it's done, it's just that there's another logic that it could also use.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? It's not that it's not logical now, it's just that, you can fine tune the logic if you want.
I do think that a precedent set in the larger ordinance would have some weight, as to how we do it, because we don't want to do it one way here and another way there, and, but I'll look that up and see exactly what the precedent is.
I'm trying to think, is there another one that might, be an example?
Yeah, there's a little more.
Is there another one, there's only one, that's the one that comes to mind quickly.
I don't have anything on my mind right now.
I will take a look at that.
It's all the ordinance.
I'll take a look and see if I can find a example of either way.
Can we do one more, short one, tonight?
Okay, so, top of page nine, we've got cross-off of the entry stream crossing guidelines, and the citation at the bottom there, I think that was superscript four, and the way I printed this does not include subscripts, I mean footnotes.
What was the second item after New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines?
It is, New Hampshire Stream Crossing, oh, the Stream Crossing Guidelines actually has, talks about footnote number four, you know, superscript four, which you don't see here because of the way I printed it, I didn't want to print 20 pages, 116 would do.
Oh, yeah, I see some, some cross-dosers.
Right, well, four is gone, because this was the citation for this.
Oh, right, for the New Hampshire, right, okay, got it, got it, got it.
So those two go together.
Can you show me where the original four was, I just want to get my...
Um, the thing, you might have seen it last time.
It's in two, well, something was in there, I'm not sure. That's not the one I was hoping.
Um, do you have a copy of, um, of the February?
Yes.
Yeah, so just look in, uh, right above the redevelopment section. Section three, one, two is redevelopment. Just look right above that.
Uh, page eleven, in redevelopment.
And just above that, item seven, is talking about, um, the D M P manuals, uh, superscript two, New Hampshire Stream Crossing Guidelines, superscript four.
Oh, it's that one.
So four is gone, and the, and the footnote that goes with it.
I tried to mark all these things, I could, I missed that one.
How come we got, uh, under redevelopment in the? Well, that's preceding redevelopment.
Proceeding, you're saying. Yes, right above it. And I'm not sure if it was going to, presuming it's going to go to another page. If you actually have footnotes, it's going to line up differently than the one.
Yeah, okay. You can do one more, please.
Um, actually, you know, we didn't talk about, oh, never mind. Okay, so, on page nine.
Yeah, this brings us to Jen's work.
Yeah, um, before we consider what she's saying there, um, all I did is change effective impervious area to disconnected impervious cover, which is a calculation, part of the effective impervious area calculation, and to me, it all made sense after I did that.
Let's end on that note.
Yeah. I went to enlarge citations, but I didn't.
Okay, so now we can compare that with this, but, but really what she's doing, what she's doing, um, there is a suggestion there. And it's similar to the.